All right, let's open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment, does anyone have any public comments today? Quiet crowd. Um, I will look for a motion to approve the March fifteenth board meeting agenda.
I do have one addition I'd like to make that's approval to hire Gary Lindensfeller Felzer as part-time landfill operator at Level B twenty-two, Step Three, twenty-two, twenty-two per hour. Suggesting adding that to the consent agenda.
Yeah, everybody read that email? Everybody's all right with adding it to?
Madam Chair, move to approve the amended agenda.
Okay.
I'll second Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Schmidt. Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'll look for, do you want to go through the consent agenda a little bit?
Consent agenda includes approval of the March first twenty-twenty-two board meeting minutes, approval of social services accounts payable, approval of county and hospital accounts payable, approval to hire full-time facilities worker Chad Gertis at Level A twelve, Step One, seventeen dollars and thirteen cents per hour, effective March twenty-eighth, approval of a status change for part-time corrections officer Daniel Fanta full-time, effective March sixteenth, approval to hire full-time deputy Dylan Watt, Level Nine DS, Step One, twenty-six forty per hour, effective March sixteenth, approval of the twenty-twenty-one emergency management performance grant, approval of renewal of the consumption and display permit for Riverside Store and Tavern, approval of the twenty-twenty-two Safe Assure Service Agreement, approval of aquatic invasive species watercraft inspection and decontamination contract, approval of the twenty-twenty-two gravel quotes, and then approval to hire Gary Lindens Felzer as part-time landfill operator at Level B twenty-two, Step Three, twenty-two, twenty-two per hour.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
I just thought, Paul, do you have, uh, is the AIS, is that, you know, if that's very comparable?
Cause I was gonna ask a question about that too, because it's showing a hundred and thirty-two thousand that we're gonna approve, which is the contract price. However, it went on to say that we may have up to a hundred and fifty thousand,
Uh, Ariana, you're-
Of which we get reimbursed.
Yeah, Ariana's on the line. Ariana, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, um, so we have inspection grants that we award every year, and so in order for our grantees to have those hours on their launches, we have to backfill them. Um, because we're the local government unit with a delegation agreement, and so once those hours are staffed on a launch, the contractor bills the county, and then the county bills the grantee. Um, the grantee then pays us, and then we reimburse them through the grant program. So the reason the, there's two separate amounts is because our cost as a county for the program we're running is the one thirty-two, five forty-seven, I believe, um, and then, or seventy-four, forty, and then the cost for the additional inspections is gonna depend on what the associations are able to pay and what they, um, agree to in their agreements with the county to get back billed on. Sometimes that will be a bit higher than what we originally estimated if they are willing to spend more that year. Sometimes it might be a little bit less, um, but that won't exceed the one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars that are set in the allocated budget for inspections.
So we are approving the contract, which of course has not got anything to do with the additional hours. This is strictly the contract, correct?
Yes.
And is that comparable last year? Is it up, down, sideways?
Um, so it's, it's on the mark for what we saw last year. We expected prices to increase, um, just with the inflation we're seeing everywhere right now, uh, but especially in the, in the industry, it's a little bit challenging for them to find folks, uh, especially during the pandemic who are not returning from previous seasons, like new inspectors. Luckily in our county, we have a lot of folks that come back year to year. Um, but it's, it's gone up maybe about seventy cents from previous years if you average out both levels, because we pay for two different types of inspectors, um. But I would say it's appropriate. We did put a bid out and contacted all the local companies that operate in the area and asked them for quotes. This was the best that we could get for the program as far as hours and scope of services.
Okay, that answered my questions.
I just, I have one more, uh, this is for Becky, is Dylan Watt, that's a, that's actually a filled position? Or we gained a little ground, is?
That's a filled position, and so we're still seeking part-time.
Sure.
So that was in the budget, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's open. That's all I had.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Schmidt. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, is Julie on?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi Julie.
I'm here.
Hi there. I didn't see your pretty face up there, so I don't know if you're on or not. Um, Phil Smalls, Public Works Director.
Good morning. I have one item for you this morning. Again, it's Phil Smalls, Public Works Director. Item in front of you is to approve a detour agreement and resolution for a trunk highway fifteen detour, which as you can see on the screen utilizes a portion of County State Highway seventeen from trunk highway twenty-four up to highway fifty-five. Um, construction in Kimball on trunk highway fifteen is what MinDOT is, um, going through this spring or summer, that's gonna require them to have a detour around that area, and they asked to use our seventeen. And, uh, that's the agreement I have in front of me.
When, when we do detours like that for them, do they bring the road back to where it should be?
If anything major happens, they're responsible for maintenance during the detour, yes. But I know there's a clause in the agreement that says because of the payment for loss of use, they're exempting themselves from any, um, repaired, putting it back to the way it was. But i- in my experience, they will keep it up during the duration of the detour, so there's no reason that it should be a problem after they're done.
So they're basically paying us a hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-five cents per day for ninety-six days to use our road.
And that equation, I mean, that's, that's established. Um, is it adequate to cover construction costs? I'd say no. But yes, that's the number they use.
And I take it if, uh, if they go over there ninety-six days, they give us a, continue it there per diem, if you will.
Right, the actual payment will be based on the actual duration of the detour.
Any other questions? Answered my question, that's all I had.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve detour agreement one oh four nine four four two with MinDOT for use of Meeker Cassa seventeen as the detour route for trunk highway fifteen construction.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schiefelbein, any other discussion? All in favor?
I just noticed, this is a resolution?
Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Andrew. Uh, we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes. Right, it passes.
Thank, thanks for the heads up to that note you sent out, just to giving us some background information on that, thank you.
By the way, Phil, I was at the Darland Township meeting, and they are gonna take care of those dead ends, they, they realize.
They are?
Yeah, yeah. I mentioned them, and I said, yeah, we know, we're aware. And I ma- also mentioned the stuff on the right away, and they're kind of aware of that too, and I guess, you know, they're not, if you bill, you bill, that's their answer. They've tried to get out and tell people, but when it doesn't work. There was some interesting discuss- discussion about the culvert too, so.
On fourteen?
Yeah, so that will be an interesting meeting.
I, I've been getting, you know, a fair amount of feedback, and maybe up to fifteen phone calls or emails that I've had since I sent out that notice. So I mean, there will be interest.
There will be, and I think, and some of them just want it smaller, they don't want people coming over partying on their points, so.
There's opinions on both sides.
Yeah, they're very complimentary of you on the maintenance agreement, they're happy. So, they wanted me to pass that on to the county, they're happy with the service they're getting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nice to hear something positive once in a while.
Yeah.
Okay, Mikel Johnson, Human Source Resources Coordinator. Thanks, Phil.
Good morning, Mikel Johnson, Human Resources Coordinator. Uh, what I have for you today is approving the contract of utilizing David Drown and Associates for the market study. Uh, at the February second county board meeting, the county board approved going forward with the study. Uh, and then this is just bringing the contract forward and noting that the insurance amounts for the professional liability in the contract are lower than MCIT's recommendation, so it's just making the board aware of that piece. Uh, the risk for that piece is relatively low as the nature of the work being performed. Um, there, the, the risk with that is low because if there is a mistake that is found, it's something that generally we can go back and, and make a, a correction for it, so.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the, uh, contract with David Drown Associates for market analysis.
Is that an insurance issue? I mean, it's low, but I mean, is there, I mean, is there really any risk? I mean, this is a, more of a consultation than it is a, I mean, they're not, they're recommending us what we do, but they're actually.
Correct, yep. We'd still have our top-in-class study or committee involved in the study.
Yeah, no issues anywhere on the insurance side of it?
Yeah, I was.
The only question I had was, I mean, MCIT believes that it's low, why do they believe it's low?
Because MCIT places a blanket statement on-
Blanket statement, okay.
I say that a lot of times.
On these sorts of liability, or these insurance levels, and so they're not looking at it from this contract to this contract. They're saying professional liability should be four million dollars.
Okay, it's not on a case-by-case basis, they're just sweeping.
Yes, their, their response always is that the, it's up to the local jurisdiction to make the decision.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the contract for utilizing David Drown Associates for performing the market analysis and pay grid calibration.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Uh, second it.
Second by Commissioner Schiefelbein. I have a, just a, last time we did this, there was a lot of discussion about where the comparisons were gonna be made. Is that something you do as you go down the line, or are they the deciders of that? Or are you going county to county? Do you do private? How are they made? How do they reach, um?
So we'll have an, uh, uh, I can't talk today. We'll have an initial meeting, um, as soon as that we get this, um, decided, and then that'll be something that we can discuss with them, is, is who will go out to the parents too.
So who, and that's, who's on them?
So the Compensation Classification Committee includes Commissioners Schmidt and Schiefelbein, myself, Mikel, um, Paul Bukovich, and, uh, Phil Smalls, and, uh, Attorney Schiefelbein.
And, and we will have some input into where those comparisons are made, et cetera, or, or they'll be the deciders, or?
Yeah, I would imagine they're gonna come to us with a recommendation.
So if you want input, I could just send an email or something. I'm just, cause last time, it kind of got a little bit, there was some disagreement, were you, I don't know if you were here, I think.
No, I don't know if I was when they chose.
To make sure that we're comparing apples to apples is what the concerns were, so we don't have, so we get it right, and we, you know, that's the main thing, so. That would be, um, one of my questions I'd be interested in. So maybe after your meeting, you can come back and, and kind of refresh us and let us know what you think.
Yeah, I think what we're definitely, and we're gonna rely on the consultant to give us advice on that, because we want to make sure that we're, like you said, comparing apples to apples, but also comparing to the market in which we're competing for employees.
We're in a, we're, we're in a unique place here, and we talk about it all the time, because we're in driving distance of bigger counties where they're gonna make more money, so we, all of this is-
We're surrounded by that.
We're surrounded, so.
That's our challenge.
That's the challenge, exactly. So that's why I would be interested in how they're.
So yeah, well, we haven't had that conversation with them yet. When we do, we can share more information with the full board.
Any other questions? Not all take the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Julie, if you have questions, just let me know.
You asked, you asked my very question, Beth, so thank you.
Thank you. I forget you're up there. Thank you, Mikel. Uh, Greg Schultz, Land Use, uh, Records Director.
Good morning, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. This morning I have six items. So first one will be the Luke and Katie Klutske Landscape Project on Lake Manuela. And this is- This is something that they're gonna put up, landscape project, as you can see, they're gonna put up eight hundred eighty square feet of boulder retaining walls over five different tiers. This is a very steep slope, um, property. Currently have railroad ties and those, where those tiers are right now, they're kind of degrading, they're falling away from the slope, so they're gonna replace them with a boulder wall. Um, they're gonna put seventeen hundred square feet of pavers, fifty steps, fifty new steps, eighty cubic yards of rock, twenty-four yards of gravel, twenty yards of pavers they're gonna use approximately, or twenty more yards of soil to stabilize that bank that's existing there now. Um, as of the time of the meeting, Ethan Jensen did not comment on this project. That's what I have for information on that. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I move to approve application for CUP to move more than ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone, and fifty cubic yards of material in the Shoreland District of American Station of Lake Manuela, with conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Schiefelbein, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, any more questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item I have is a RV permit for five years, IUP RV permit for five years on Lake Washington. And this one here, they've had RV type trailer, it's actually a small trailer they've had on that property since, uh, nineteen eighty-seven, they've had it on there. After the first initial five-year student, they have to go to IUPs rather than just a standard RV permit, so. Property owners have owned this property since twenty-twenty, and they want to go another five years with this permit, so it's just expired.
Madam Chair, move to approve the interim use permit application to allow an RV trailer to remain on the property for another five years for the property addressed two-two-eight-eight-five seven-hundred-and-fifth Avenue, Dassel, Minnesota.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schiefelbein, any discussion? So, so this is just a summer property where they, and they just have a trailer out that they use in summer?
Yep, exactly.
And so they're just- Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, next IUP is Meeker Wash, Shannon Gravel. Looking for an IUP for another six years to operate out of that pit. As you can see, the new area, they're gonna be going closer to the road, but as close as they can for this in the next six years. They're moving about five hundred thousand cubic yards of material out of the pit, that's what their plan is. This pit has approximately twenty more years of life in it, they figure, total, so.
And they run a nice clean pit, it's, they keep it up around there, matter of fact, I think they partnered with the township to blacktop and make a nine-ton road out of one of the gravel roads too.
At the meeting, there wasn't any complaints, which is surprising.
They contribute quite a bit to the ga- uh, gravel tax too, we do each year.
Accurately, too.
Accurately, yes.
I might add. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve interim use permit application to Mine Wash Crush Aggregate in the A-one Agriculture Preservation District for six years and part of the northeast quarter of Section eighteen, Township one hundred eighteen, Range thirty, in Helsworth Township, with conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, any other questions? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item I have is a final plat application for Stevens Hill Garrity. This is up on Section eleven, Township one twenty, Range twenty-nine, Kingston Township. This is all lost a little bit off of Lake Francis. This is a three-lot flat, we'll be finished with it. Lot one will be four point four five acres, lot two, four point two acres, lot three will be ten acres. Resilient to our one last, is that the last meeting, last month's meeting?
So they're splitting two into three, the other one down there?
Yes, yep.
Motion by anyone?
Sorry, I'm reading there.
Oh, it's okay, trying to rush you. This is the one we had up here before, isn't it?
Yeah, this one, and the next one, last one. A preliminary plat, yeah, for you, resort to preliminary plat.
Is that your area, Danny?
Yeah, it's like kitty corner from one of our places, I think, on the back side somewhere.
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat for three-lot plat of Cedar Ridge. The plat is located in Section eleven Township, one twenty, Range twenty-nine, Parcels one-three oh one nine two zero zero two and one-three zero one nine two zero zero four of Kingston Township in Meeker County. This property is located within the Shoreland District of Lake Francis.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I hear a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item I have is the final plat, uh, for Tom and Shirley Smith, this is on Lake Ripley. That one's called Lot Rock Mound. This again is, is a one parcel, they're splitting into two lots. So making one into two.
But it had the required square footage?
Yes, it does, yep. They meet the minimum requirements for square footage.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the final plat application for the two residential and two outlet, uh, plat of Rock Mound located in Section twenty-three Township one nineteen, Range thirty-one, Parcel fourteen dash zero four seven two zero zero, Litchfield Township, Meeker County, within the Shoreland District of Lake Ripley.
Motion by Commissioner Schiefelbein, do I hear a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt, any discussion? Julie, that's your area, I think, do you have anything, or isn't it?
I, I do not, as long as, um, it passed seven oh on the zoning planning board. Everything looked, looked fine to me, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, the last item I have is third-party contract for inspection services for the building code in Lake County. So since Kevin, move back, uh, since Kevin has retired in the city of Litchfield, um, zoning inspector, or building code inspector, human twos, and we're, and using the city's inspector, it was kind of on a, it was on a limited time basis, and that time is kind of running short right now. So with that, we've submitted out some bids for an outbid, just any, um, interest in, in doing the third-party inspection services for Meeker County, and we've had two, we have two options. We have, put contracts forth to, uh, take over the building code inspection services for Meeker County. One of those is Mint Spec, the other one is one-on-one, um, Development Resources. Um, I think you've got information between the two, kind of a breakdown between the differences between the two. A big change is gonna come between if we hire either one of these, um, in our fees for the, uh, building permits. Currently, Meeker County has been using nineteen eighty-eight fee schedules, and they use, we use our own cost sheet. Since Kevin started in two thousand and two, he's been using nineteen eighty-eight fee schedules. Building one-on-one wants to use a ninety-four fee schedule, and Mint Spec will use a nineteen ninety-seven fee schedule. As you can see, we're using a nineteen ninety-four fee schedule, even using our current cost rates for square footage that we've come up with, Kevin's come up with, and the permits come up with. It'll increase our prices on permits by about thirty-seven percent, we're using a ninety-fourth schedule and fifty-four percent by the ninety-seven schedule. Neither of the contractors are interested in using the eighty-eight, they haven't used the eighty-eight schedule for, for years. Nobody uses it, we use it, um, apparently, from what I understand. So, that's a big thing that's gonna change. Um, Development one-on-one is, has one person, he does all the inspecting, pretty much he's got a subcontractor, the guy out of Redwood Falls. Well, Mint Spec has a team of inspectors that will kind of be assigned to Meeker County, whether in the area, not just one, one person, they'll work with multiple. I've talked to a couple towns that have used Mint Spec for years, City Glenco, um, or my, uh, City Mount, I've talked to them, and they're very happy with Mint Spec, and they've been using it for quite a few years. Since, let's see here, I believe since the nineties. Glenco has used them since nineteen ninety-one, they're very happy with Mint Spec. They have no complaints with the work they've done. One-on-one, um, Development Resources, Kopey has been using them for years. They have no issues with them, other than the billing, they have some issues with billing, sometimes it comes in a little late, you could put up a couple months together. And then I contacted the City of Olivia too, they've been using them for quite a few years as well, and have no complaints, they have no issues with one-on-one development doing their inspection services. Our basic fee schedules will go up like for roofing, siding, windows, right now we have forty-eight dollars. Mint Spec, those basic, um, permits will go up to seventy-five dollars for Mint Spec. Um, for one-on-one Development Resources, they'll go up to about sixty-seven dollars. That's for the basic fees, those basic permits, one and done type things.
So Greg, let me ask this, and I just want to get an understanding of how this will work. Let's say that we have, uh, someone who is putting on an addition. Framing's done, they need a framing inspection, framing and trust inspection. They'll call in, how long, what's the, the difference in time between the time they request the?
They will call in directly to these contractors, the calls will go directly to Mint Spec, they will set up this. They are both in agreement to do it in forty-eight hours.
Okay.
It's kind of, it kind of depends on how they run it. Hopefully they get it in twenty-four, so, depends on the area. They both work in the area, um, they're not one-on-one, unless it's at Kopey, or it's Olivia, do the granite policy, he's through the area all the time. Mint Spec is out in this area too, doing a few things, and they would assign somebody out here, they don't quite hit this far west on a regular basis, but they would have somebody, they have a team. On a regular basis, but they would have somebody, they have a team of a number of inspectors they use that would be assigned here.
So at that point, we won't utilize City of Litchfield at all?
And that's the intention, the city additional doesn't want us to use Jim much longer than what we've been using for two months initially, we kind of talked about two months and that's about it. Beyond that, they really didn't want to give Jim up for our inspection services beyond a couple of months.
Will we continue to look for someone?
Yeah, we absolutely, so.
Because I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna get a lot of pushback on this, as you very well know, I'm sure, but our our people are used to Kevin being there.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And and you're gonna have to really do some re-educating.
I I actually called Andrew and had that same conversation, because it's like Kevin's local, he gets it.
Right.
Gets Meeker County residents, whatever, and this is someone outside and. The the other question I had that I don't know if Andrea answered was, what about, like, are they gonna be, have we seen any in terms of one oh one? Like rechecks in terms of they two, are they sticklers, because do they get paid again if they have a recheck in terms of an inspection and come out and get paid again?
They both get paid for rechecks.
Okay, is there any uh any indication in terms of their reputation in terms of that, because then that would be, you know, sometimes that would cost a homeowner again, because every time now. And and no matter what, it's gonna cost us more than Kevin, because the way Andrew said is there was a somewhat of a deficit in this little area with Kevin hired on. And now they are getting paid directly each other inspections. And so the price for inspections go up.
Will go up, the cost of the county's not gonna go up a whole lot more, still gonna be a deficit, well.
The county won't, but the people will.
Minspec actually, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're taking permits and going up over fifty percent, it's a lot.
Permits are gonna go up a lot, so it's gonna cost cost the customer anywhere from thirty four, thirty seven percent to about fifty four percent minimum. And that's using, they both of them have agreed to use our cost per square foot values for most part, which I wasn't necessarily expecting. The cost per square foot is pretty low.
But we're at that point where if you can't hire someone, you have to fill that void regardless, is my understanding.
Yes.
My hope is that it's temporary.
Well, we have a what, it's a sixty days if we sign on?
We have, there's a there's a sixty day termination clause, and so um if we get to a point where we're able to hire someone, we can certainly back out of it.
But sixty days, otherwise it's a three year contract, right?
I will tell you that we did, we're doing.
Minspec is one year.
We were doing a little something at the business I man.
Minspec is one, one oh one development.
Oh, gotcha.
One oh one development is three years.
So it's, so we can get out of it or we can't?
We can, sixty days.
Sixty days.
Yes.
Was there any negotiating in terms of that to, you know?
Well, I've got.
Decrease the length of time?
Yeah, I've got a message into one oh one about that, so.
Just in case, if you get a lot of pushback.
I came from Brandy's recommendation, and I haven't heard back from him yet, so.
Gotcha. So if we did get pushed back, you know, because it's a big paradigm shift for anybody in Meeker if they do anything, but. As Andrew said, the contractors usually are the ones who will shout the loudest sometimes, and they happen to have.
The challenge, the challenge that we've run into as we've recruited to fill this position, which I think we posted in November.
November.
Um is, I think we've had two applicants now.
They're either one of them qualified, certification.
Having that required licensure has been the real challenge, if we can get someone who has the limited license, at least then we can work to help them get the full license, but. They can be doing inspections in the meantime. We, it it's really difficult for us to hire someone who doesn't have any sort of licensure, because they can't do in any inspections, and we're still in this place where we need to lean on someone else to do our inspections for us, but we're paying for this employee. So um, which is the reason why we ultimately looked at, this is the solution. What's supposed to happen is the state's supposed to be our backstop, if we don't have someone who can perform inspections, the state is supposed to be able to step in and do that, well, they don't have enough staff to be able to do that either.
That would really be a nightmare, let me tell you, if you were waiting for them to come.
Yep.
Because, as you all know, you know, this is seasonal, and they need their inspecting done when they need their inspecting, that's what they're used to getting. And we were doing a little project um when the city was had outsourced, and it wa- it was a nightmare, just, it it was a real nightmare, the things they were asking us to do. To the point of ridiculous, so we really don't want to do this any longer than we have to, I hope.
Yeah, I mean, part of it is we'll we'll see how this goes, and if we ultimately find that this works really well for us, then great, and if it doesn't, then then that's fine too, we're gonna continue to recruit for the position, so.
And I've and I've had contact with contractors and talked about both working with both, seems to be like the one oh one development, Derek working with Darren, contractors I talked to with. He's fair and he's as timely as he can be.
So that that's their preference.
That's, few I've talked to, that would be their preference.
So, this is kind of a question for County Attorney Shifelbein, in this contract now, we absorbed of, or we're, we have no liability if they take a fall on the work site?
Correct.
They're contractors, that is their responsibility.
Well, to be fair, when I reviewed one oh one's contract, I think I added three pages to the agreement, because I wanted. The language that I typically see, and so I added that language to be very clear that this is an independent contractor. They will indemnify us, and any agents will be working under them, we hold no um insurance on behalf of their agents or themselves. And so that's language that's still pending review.
So, we're not here today looking to approve a contract, because we don't have the contract finalized yet. If we felt the contractor was in a pretty good place, then we we may come forward and say, well, let's do it upon, you know, approval of the county attorney, but there was some significant work that needed to be done on it. So, today what we're looking for is the the general direction of which one we would prefer to go with, our recommendation is one oh one development for the customer service recommend or referrals that. Uh Greg received as he was doing his process, as well as the um the lesser of the fee increase uh compared to Minspec.
Hey, one more question though, if I may, um, because we brought it up, we talked about a shingling permit, say seventy five dollars. So they go out and inspect, and they find that the frost shield wasn't put in the way it should have been, so they have to redo it. They have to go back for a second recheck, who pays for that second recheck, or is that all a part of the seventy five dollar permit fee?
I imagine at that point, they'll go, they'll re- they'll recharge the reinspection fee.
But will we charge the permit uh person, or are we gonna be absorbing that?
We, well, if we're getting loaned from a third party, we should charge the client, we get a bill from one oh one. We are going to be collecting the fees and either one of these, Minspec or one oh one, we will be reimbursing them, collecting the fees, that's all the work, we'll get an invoice from.
Big difference. Yeah, I I know, I that's why I called Andrew on it, I was like, you know, it's a big difference from Kevin.
Absolutely.
Locally.
What is?
To out, and then I don't know what else we can do, though, one question I had with Andrew is like when we're advertising, it's. It's Kevin would have been at the top of the scale, so I how do you advertise?
We we advertise the whole range.
The whole range, and you're still, in terms of experience, would be the top of the scale.
If if someone came in with, you know, twenty years of inspecting experience, then we would have a discussion about placing them.
That's, I just wanted that clarification, it's like, what else can you do at this point, other than, you know?
Well, I think our.
I I have a question.
Julie, go ahead.
I have a question, um, we currently are advertising to fill the inspector position. And it was mentioned that there are two candidates that have shown an interest, but neither of them have the proper education credentials. How long would it take for one of these individuals, if we felt they were a good candidate, to attain that licensure, and would the county be willing to assist them in that?
The two that applied had no experience in construction, it would take over a year to get certified. You have to go to a year of class at Brooklyn Center, it's actually the only place they have schooling is at Anoka County Technical College, and you have to go down there, well, some some of it's online, some of it's. In-house, you have to go down every Wednesday for a year to get the minimum hours, and then after that, you go through another crash course, and then you take the limited license, so it's over a year process. I was actually signed up for it before Piston left, so I kind of know the minimum basics, and that's just to get your limited license. And after that, you would have to work a number of years in the contract and take your full blown commercial license as well. Which years of a process, probably a three year process to get fully certified, if you don't have construction background. If you are a contractor and have a certain number of hours, you can take the crash course, which is a four day crash course, and you can take the limited license. We have had one person in December who showed interest in that, and we gave him the information on what to do for that, but he hasn't gotten back to us. And the problem with that is they'd have to take a week's worth of, I suppose, their their salary out, working to go to this crash course, and then take another test on another day, and if they don't pass.
Well, if it was someone.
I suppose they put a jeopardy in their own employment by doing that, I suppose if they don't pass.
If we had someone that had some experience and just needed to add to their licensing, we could probably do that, but I'm I'm understanding, we don't have anybody.
Of contractor experience before you can take that crash course.
Is the licensing the same for us as it is for a big city?
Yes, statewide.
That's probably part of the issue again, government regulation.
But you know, think about contractors today. What they are currently making by building compared to what we're offering to pay. You know, you're gonna stay in the contracting business.
Well, we have no choice here, obviously.
They're currently now making forty bucks a mile.
Yeah. Uh, one question I got, and so at the eighty eight fee schedule, we were basically in a negative, correct?
A little bit, we're about six percent for the ten year.
Okay, so in other words, we'd see a six percent increase just to get us back to par.
And I increased our our square footage fee by ten percent to try to make even for twenty twenty two, I was gonna make even on that fee schedule, if we had somebody in-house, so yeah.
So what I what I'm getting at is it's not a true thirty seven percent increase, because there would be an increase irregardless.
Yes.
Is that?
Yes.
Fair statement.
And the thing is with the contract one oh one and the Minspec contracts is they they take seventy five percent, Minspec would take seventy five percent of the. Building permit side, but they take a hundred percent of the plan review. See, the permits are broken down into building permit, plan review, and state surcharge, that gets a total of the total permit price. Both these contractors are gonna take, Minspec will take seventy five percent of the building permit side, they'll take a hundred percent of the plan review, and will have to be a state and surcharge to come back to us. One oh one developments could take eighty five percent of the plan or the building permit side, plus a hundred percent of the the plan review. So we have sixty five percent of our permits approximately, that are gonna be going to the contractors that Kevin used to take by the bill, by the plan reviews, sixty five percent they get a plan review, so if we don't get any of that. It's a big cost that comes out of.
So i- if if I can share a little bit, I pulled up the information from the proposed contract on the reinspection fees. Says a reinspection fee may be assessed for each inspection or reinspection when such work, portion of work for which inspection is called is not complete or when corrections called for are not made. On valuation based permits, the fee is not to be interpreted as requiring reinspection fees the first time a job is rejected for failure to comply with the requirements of the code. But is controlling the practice of calling for inspections before the job is ready for such inspection or reinspection. So basically what it's saying is if you have an outlet in the wrong place, or it's too close to something like that, it's it's incorrect. You gotta come back and get it reinspected, but you're not gonna be charged a reinspection fee, it's to prevent someone from, hey, I think I'm gonna be ready for the inspection, I'm gonna call it up, have them come in, and then the inspector shows up and you're not ready. Now, if you have multiple issues, they would probably charge the fees.
So, either one of these two, will that reduce or increase Monica's involvement in permits?
She's still gonna ha- have to handle the fees and the paperwork, and making sure the plans, the plans that get dropped off here and all the blueprints, and applications get to these two.
But under either one of those two.
She's only gonna have to schedule on it.
But either one of these two, the the one oh one or the other one, and using the nineteen ninety four fee schedule, we basically can pay for her work that she does with permits. I know you had it in there, right?
It it was still like a a nine thousand dollar deficit on the account.
Unless we go to the ninety seven.
Unless we go to the ninety seven, then there's a surplus, but again, we're charging higher fees at that point, so. And it's a similar ballpark to what the deficit has been in the past.
Do we have a comparison, or can we get a comparison to our neighbors on this fee schedule?
Sure. Get that, we can provide that.
Is is the eighty eight, ninety four, ninety seven, are those statewide fee schedules?
Yes.
Well, I know what I paid for a building permit nineteen ninety five in Scott County, and it's hired and it was only a hundred thousand dollars, house at that time, but was hired in all three of them.
Well, when you wanna compare, if you wanna compare neighbors, it gets a little muddy, because everybody's different.
Well.
Some counties and some cities just want development, so their fees are really cheap.
Right.
And the fee, and the counties and the cities eat the cost of the building permit just to get development in your area. K O I counties, it's cheaper than we are.
That's what they do.
Even cheaper than what Kevin was, because I think they want development over there.
I attended a seminar about development, I'm saying they encourage us reducing the permit fee. Are getting rid of it to encourage development, so it probably isn't.
So that certainly is an option that we have here. An option that we have is we don't have to increase the fees, we are going to be charged these fees by the consultant. And then the county could take on that additional cost, so we collect, in the case of the ninety four, we would collect sixty three percent basically of the. What we are being charged by the con- by the consultant, and then the county would be responsible to cover the rest of the cost, so basically, we would be subsidizing the. The building inspection process through other tax dollars.
Tim, what do you think? If if we if we leave it the way it is, that means that you gotta pay for everybody's building permit a little bit on your property taxes.
Tell them you're just here to report. That is one thing that you talk about everywhere, when you talk about trying to get housing and development in, that you go easy on those kind of permits, I'm not saying we should do that. But but what I fear here is we're gonna have a change of service, and then we're gonna increase at the same time. You know, that's never a good thing, no matter, no matter where you are, it's just not a good thing.
I think we're gonna need a little more data, a little more discussion on where we land.
We arise, if we arrive today at who you wanna hire, reach out to. Think that would be the step we should establish today, because obviously, if we can't use the city inspector anymore, we need to, we need to have someone.
Yeah, yeah, and certainly our concern is we're getting into building season, and so that the pace of the permits is going to start to increase in the next month or two.
Absolutely, will we be covering the same areas we've always covered then?
Yes.
Okay, and they are?
Same townships.
You know, it's fine.
Theodore Reynolds, Cosmos, Girl City, Dassel.
Okay.
Not City Mills, yeah, Cosmos, Dassel.
Assuming the city uh inspector is paid more than the county inspector then?
I don't think so. I don't remember what it.
No.
They do not?
Close.
You know, and if you really talk about reducing fees to encourage development.
Not enough to change.
Most of our developments are in the cities, rather than out in the country.
Oh, gotcha. So, getting back, shall we get a motion on who you wanna reach out to?
Yeah, we could, we could use a motion to um continue discussions with a specific firm.
And you're recommending uh one oh one development, that's what you would like, so I would look for a motion from someone.
Madam Chair, I'll make a recommendation, a recommendation to hire one oh one Development Resources Incorporated to conduct building code inspections. For the enforcement of the building code in Meeker County and make necessary adjustments to the county's fee schedule.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shifelbein, any other discussion?
So you're gonna, Brandy's gonna be reviewing, or she already has been reviewing the contract.
Yep.
Do we wanna make any adjustments in terms of time, or is that, it's counterproductive that it might cost more?
As as far as?
One versus three years, because what if this one oh one doesn't quite work out?
But again, we have, we have the termination clause.
That's only sixty days though, I'm talking, you know, right, which if I were, you know, I don't know.
The the other thing is it it does cut both ways, so if they wanna get out of it and we don't have a thirty day, then we have thirty days to figure out how we're gonna do our inspections.
Good point. And you know what, onboarding of a new person takes sixty days anyway, by the time you.
I I have a question.
Go ahead, Julie.
How will this decision affect the posting for a county building inspector? Will the job description be changed, I know that the current posting supposedly will close at midnight tonight. So will this influence any rewording of the posting for the county building inspector?
So the the consensus that I've heard from the board today is that there's desire to. So the, the consensus that I've heard from the board today is that there's desire to continue to have an inspector on staff. So we will continue to recruit, um, as we have, there will be no changes to the position description.
So you'll just extend it out?
Yeah, we'll continue the posting as we have for the past four months.
Any other questions? Discussion, if not, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Andrew Lutzon, Administrator.
I have one question for, for him, as long as you're gonna go. On the, I forgot his name, I just had him up, the new, the guy that we interviewed, or just hired for landfill. That, uh, there's no date anywhere, does he have inkling or an idea?
The idea is as soon as possible, but we need to complete background check, you know, the interview and the offer occurred yesterday. So we're, we'll get through that as fast as we can. But that's why we wanted to get it on the agenda today, so we didn't have to wait three more weeks to get that approved.
And I, and I understand the talks still continue for the sale or the lease or whatever.
Yes, absolutely, that's not gonna impact anything, but it's gonna be several months to a year.
Have we been closed for a lo, are we closed out there completely, or just to certain things?
We closed on the demo side, transfer station, mixed always is still going.
Did they get the two bulldozers fixed?
Not yet. That I know of, as a timeless meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it on Friday and, um, Brent was coordinating getting them out there to fix them.
Anything else for Greg? Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, my only item for the report is our scheduled work session next week, as a reminder, will be canceled. And we've rescheduled it for April twelfth, which will be our, our road tour.
We're gonna do a road tour for real.
We're gonna, yes, we are, for real. We're gonna go look at some projects and.
Can we do it virtual, cause that is the bumpiest, that is the bumpiest. That was bad, it was just bad.
Primary focus is to go and, um, review some of the, uh, outchops. Um, as well as some of the challenges that public work sees when they're out doing their work. Um, one or two of the upcoming projects and then, uh, go take a look at the restroom facility and shower facility at Coronas.
What they do really is they take you on the roughest roads, they can get you on the C C T bus. And you're just dying to fix roads by the time you get back. Get the party bus from Hicks, please. It rides better.
I can promise that we do have a C C T bus that is lined up, so.
And they don't have any new C C T buses, so they're all old.
They're all on hold, we can't get parts.
Um, and that concludes my report.
All right, Board of Commissioners Committee updates, you wanna start, Steve? Paul can start.
I can start too.
Commissioner Shifelbine, why don't you start?
Sure, okay, I had a couple, uh, one was an investment committee with, uh, Steve. And so it's kinda interesting, um, uh, we're trying to deal, see if we're gonna go more with a P F M. As far as an investment portfolio with the county and the hospital and.
Can I just, cause I'm not good at this, I have savings accounts and, so what is P F M, is that a?
It's like basically like an air prize of whatever, right?
They're, they're financial consultants.
Committee?
They're financial consultants.
They're mostly. They're mostly government.
Government, okay.
And the one eye-popping thing for me is, you know, the county has about, uh, twenty-five million. But that includes designated funds and, and we have, uh, investments, you know, with Wells Fargo. I think what, ten million, seven hundred thousand, that gets point seven, is what it's averaging. And the, and the hospital has almost fifty-four million dollars of basically cash. So that's a huge chunk, so, uh, the reason why it's eye-opening is I know we just gave them a hundred thousand for. What was it for? Vaccination clinics, and then they were requesting another two hundred and twenty-five thousand, so. I'd be quite hesitant to do that, because I don't even know if they invested these monies this last year. I don't know if I, I ne, I asked to see if what they're, uh, what they made in the last year. From the call beforehand, but I never got a number. It looks like it's.
Do you want the number, I can remind her, maybe she maybe just.
Yeah, it'd be great, because it looked like it was just sitting in an account, not earning any interest, which is.
No, that money's invested, I know that, so she'll get the rates of return.
A portion of it's invested, a portion of it is, is basically sitting in money market. And the reason for that was, there was concern about money having to be paid back, and so they wanted it to be liquid.
And some of that does have to be paid back, Medicare money has to be, when they got the Medicare money for the.
The numbers they had was one percent they got on two hundred and thirty thousand and. I don't know, the number they gave us is point oh two percent, as far as their magic money market account, which is nothing.
I thought a few years ago.
But I didn't understand if that's just today, or that's the whole year.
Do you know the answer to that?
That's, I believe that's where that money was placed as of the, the date of the meeting. But I do know they've largely had that money liquid for the reasons that we just discussed. But also they're planning to keep it liquid because of the capital improvements they're looking to make at, um, at the hospital over the next year or so, but. That was the, the discussion that we were having was, how much of that are they comfortable with putting into this managed investment account? That is gonna be locked up for a period of time.
So, so your question was how much the interest?
How much did they make in their investments, cause of just cash sitting there and then asking us from a hundred thousand from the county to go into a pot? That sits there, and then asking us another two hundred and twenty-five for the, the touchless thing to go into this pot or whatever. And I'm like going, uh, I think we'd have better uses of having it just sit there.
And I think their projections were much more negative than they turned out to be.
That's exactly right, Steve. So when they came and asked for that money, we did not know where we were gonna, we were projecting eleven to twelve million dollar loss. And you, when you start going through that kinda cash, your money, you know. So that's why they, in the vaccination clinics, we didn't know how many we'd have to do and it kept adding up, and that's why. Do you recall this, Andrew, that's why there was a lot of dire predictions, cause nobody knew what was gonna happen. Then they, they handed out Medicare money early and we didn't know if we'd have to pay for that back then, they got P P P money, so I think it's a lot of that. I mean, what you're asking is legitimate, but I think that's part of the reason, Danny.
In the balance though, in March of twenty-one, it's still at forty-eight million, so, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I'll find out, I know back.
I mean, I'm talking, they had pretty good coin, even when they requested it.
At the point, I mean, basically what it came down to, they hit the twenty-five million dollars, we're looking, the county was gonna put in. Six, seven, and the hospital, the balance to hit twenty-five.
Which doesn't even mean.
Which really don't mean a lot, because it's, the dollar is above twenty-five million. Then, uh, are the ones where you get the break on, up zero twenty-five.
What they had said though was that the, the minimum fee of twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And you don't start to cover that minimum fee until you have about twenty-one million dollars, so that's, that's the mark of the, we needed to hit.
And is that once, so is that adjustable, or is it a market, a flat rate you get, or what is it?
So the, it's a price of point one-two percent, basically of the investments that you have in there. At a minimum annual cost of twenty-five thousand dollars.
And then your return is?
And whatever, then they manage it to hopefully provide a greater return.
I, we're, I asked for that.
I mean, you should know the average return, because they're, we're waiting on that, right?
Well, yes, that's true, we don't have the return, what we have is the, the value increase of the, i- if you sold everything today. If it's been in there for, you know, a certain period of time, you know, how much was it worth? And what they basically showed was across the board, they're, they're beating their benchmark of what they're trying to do.
So if you only put ten million in, it's gonna cost you a point two five, for example. And if you put twenty-one million, it'd be closer to the one point one-two is what P F M would get. Of the percentage, and if you go above twenty-five million, each dollar above is like point oh eight, I think, is what it was.
But then I'm trying to figure out what, how much more we get.
I, that's the question I asked, cause I was like.
It's gotta add up then.
It does, it does, so the, the challenge is, just like the market in general, it, it fluctuates. So what could be, you know, one percent this year, could be one and a half percent next year. In the same way that it occurs when Sharon does what she does right now, which is go out and, and buy bonds and have them sit until maturity. The, the difference of what P F M does is like any managed account, they have people who monitor that. And then make decisions of, okay, the market is X today, you're in a better position to sell this bond. You take a little bit of a loss there, but we can invest it in this other thing that's gonna provide a better return. So that's, that's what they're doing, that we don't do right now, because we don't have the capacity or the knowledge to do that.
So, for example, for us, we have ten million, seven hundred thousand and thirty, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand. In Wells Fargo funds, and these are different CDs that started at, basically the average of twenty-twenty-one. And some mature at twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, right? And we're getting point oh seven?
Point seven.
Yeah, or whatever you wanna call it, yep. Yeah, right now, and all I asked is what their benchmark would be compared to that after their fees are out. But when you look at their things, you know, they show they're beating that, but, you know, I just wanted an apples-to-apples. Comparison, which is they're supposed to be getting to. And it just, yeah.
All right.
And then, uh, we had that meeting. With Woodlands about not quite meeting all our psychiatric needs and that, uh, the social services have to use some other.
Outside sources.
Outside sources to kinda meet those needs, which. I got a call from Ashley saying I had questions from Thursday's meeting, so I don't know what that means.
You have questions from Thursday's meeting?
Yeah, I didn't even know she knew, so. She left me a message saying I, she wanted to answer my questions, and I was like, I didn't ask any questions yet.
I got an email about something, but it wasn't from Thursday's meeting.
Yeah, she said Thursday, and I was like, I was just confused, I was just wondering what.
Did you ask her?
No, I didn't ask her anything. I was gonna ask her on Thursday when we meet, I know, I was gonna ask her on Thursday some stuff, but I was just confused.
I'll talk to you about it.
Okay, yep, that's all I had.
Steve?
Yeah, um. Had the AMC Legislative Conference in St. Paul on the second, third, basically, um. Public safety, a lot of, it's a pretty hot topic down there, they had. And I don't know, I, I, this is frustrating for me, from my days in the military, it's kinda like we. When you change commanders and then you start doing stuff that they, the last commander threw out from two years ago, and you start doing that again. Um, Dakota County presented during the Public Safety Committee and. They're going out, they're asking the state for a chunk of money to help them build a thirty-unit mental health facility. Which is all great, I mean, it's gonna answer problems with having mental health issues in the, in the hospitals and in the jails. And that problem that we talked about there, but. When they get done with their presentation. To me, it's like, isn't this what we had state hospitals for, and we closed down and tried to push everything to the counties? And now the counties are gonna build state hu, or, you know, state-funded hos, it's, it's like we're, we're chasing our tail and. Um, one thing I asked them, because they had their data on the screen of, uh. How Dakota County's numbers have come down in the jail and, and, and juvenile detention and things like this. Uh, through their, and I said, do you, I said, are those just numbers on board, or are those numbers tracked per individual? So just because that person's not in Dakota County Jail, is he sitting in Meeker County Jail? You know, and our, you know, your metro numbers are going down, which seems to be the case, that the metro numbers of incarcerations are going down. But then outstate, it's all ebbs and flows, I mean, we're pushing some of our metro problems to outstate. And, uh, they didn't necessarily like that question and couldn't answer it really, but. So them are some of the frustrations that came out of it, but I, I mean, the good news is they are looking at mental health and, and that's. Um, obviously a, a very big topic as well, but, and then of course staffing shortages and things like this, so, um. You know, it looks like the armor radios that has strong possibility going through, and I did get an email from Carly Stark here. Um, there's, uh, the grant, actually probably the one we just approved today, the emergency management grant. Is coming up, she asked me if I would help testify on, on committee on Wednesday for that, so. That's, I'm trying to think anything else Paul was down there to, and is there anything else or shattering you guys can touch on there? Um, then Investment Committee, Danny covered, uh, E D A on last Thursday, we did have E D A. Um, we do have one business emergency loan that has about thirty-two hundred dollars. Out that, um, we're not getting any response from that business. And, uh, so we're looking at ways, there's kinda no real teeth in these, uh, these are six thousand dollar loans that went out. To six businesses, or five thou, like five thousand dollar loans that went out in twenty, uh, twenty. And one of them is, we're having a little trouble collecting with, so they're, we're looking at, we're gonna have, uh, attorney send a letter. And try and get that collected. Um, childcare program updates, um, we had talked a while back. Uh, we pledged basically at that time ten thousand dollars, trying to get businesses to match, if you will, so we could. Get a little fun going to help some of these, uh, childcare, uh, facilities around the county. Um, we didn't get a whole lot of traction on that, we, we did get, is it Sunshine Festival? Sunshine at the fairgrounds in the summer, sunshine.
Gadsen Womer, isn't it?
No, it's, the, this one is here, but they're, they're pledging up to a thousand dollars, um.
Sunshine or whatever, that, that Christian rock thing?
No, it's not that one, it's, that fairground, I, I don't have a right name. Should've rolled it down, but I don't have it here, but, anyway, anyway, there's a thousand dollars pledged as a match of that. So we, uh, did vote to make that ten thousand available. Um, because, and primarily it, it seems to be focused on the in-home daycares. You know, to try and get them going, and we did, uh, make it available to them as a grant versus a loan. Um, so that was a big thing. Uh, other things on the board, um, we have some terms up, Tim Benoit out of Dassel is not gonna re. Uh, re, uh, apply for June, so that position will be open as of the third of June and that will come out. True, so if anybody knows anybody in that Dassel area.
And those, your people in that are according to areas, right?
We try, yeah, we try and have them spread out, and then Mike Lo, Loken, Loken out of, uh, Grove City. Is mo, he works in Alexander, he's moving out of the area, so he is not going to be, he's resigning. But Eric Holt, our, who is a representative from Litchfield currently, actually lives over on the west. So he is going to, he resigned officially, and he is going to apply for Mike Loken's spot on West Side County. So Litchfield and, and at the end, Litchfield and Dassel are gonna be looking for representatives on the board come June. Um, other than that, that's it on E D A, uh, Central Minnesota Jobs and Training was Friday. They're talking about some of their legislative things that they're supporting, uh, funding for nursing homes to support higher wages. These, uh, long-term care facilities are closing because they can't afford to pay competitive wages or keep help. Um, is getting to be, I've heard that mentioned here about Ekumen and Tolu here too as well, that things are getting kinda tough, so. Those are the biggest things that we talked about there, and that's it.
And E D A, I didn't, since I missed it, uh, did Lisa say why there's no appetite from businesses? Because I thought there was one. Saying that that wasn't even enough, and they were, and then what happened there? So there must be no appetite for the businesses to say, hey, there's a childcare problem.
I think it's, it's, to explain that, I think the biggest problem is. It's, even in best year on the childcare with Judy Holter some, some too, and it's kind of a. It's another one, it's a difficult one. It's another one, it's a difficult one to put dollars in the right place.
That's what they keep doing surveys and, um, Andrew's kinda been on the ground floor of the survey part, right, and?
Yeah, I mean, part of the challenge that we hear from businesses is, well, this, the childcare business is a business. Why should we give money to help another business set up their business? Um, which is, you know, a legitimate thing, however, the margins on these childcare businesses is so slim. That it's very difficult for folks to be able to set them up and there's a reason that we have a shortage. And so the, the committee is and EDA are trying to find ways to address that shortage, so.
And so to answer your question is I don't think the businesses.
They don't trust that.
I don't see, I don't know if they see a clear path to a solution.
There is no, ever, gonna be a clear path to that solution.
But I mean, I think it's a little muddied and it's.
But the market says that's what the market is, you know, so what are you gonna do about that?
And I, for them, I think it's hard for them to say if we donate twenty-five hundred dollars or five dollars to this cause. Are we gonna see any return on investment? Individually, as individually.
And, and I agree, I think that part of it is there, they look at the small picture when we have to start looking at the bigger picture. Like if we need another center, where's it gonna go, who's gonna wanna, is anybody gonna wanna finance it? I mean, talking about, they talk about other, a lot of other things, like if you need to fix something in your, that's fine. But don't you agree, um, Andrew, that we have to start looking at the biggest, bigger picture? So filling the gap where we're missing, if we are missing something.
Yeah, and there have been discussions about, um, centers opening or expanding or, you know, we only have a couple of centers. In the county, um, and part of the challenge is finding an operator for it, I know there's discussion at one point about. Someone who's interested in investing in a center, but not interested in operating in the center and so, um, I, I think that if. There might be opportunities for, um. Ways of assisting with financing if there was someone who's to come forward with a plan.
And I agree, but I think the bigger picture is this, if, you have daycare probably. I have no idea what it costs nowadays, but it's a heck of a lot more than what I spent on daycare. So if you got two people working between them for minimum wage or whatever, they can't afford daycare. So then we try to help them through government, but now it's getting so, even if they're making more than that, I don't know how they pay for their daycare. I, you know. It's, it's, isn't it, I mean, it's gotta be challenging unless you make.
One, one of the challenges that we, we have heard at the committee is that the wages for, you know, childcare workers are low.
They are.
And, um, but they can't push the price up because the parents either can't afford or choose not to afford. Those higher prices.
So if you're making fifteen dollars an hour and I don't know, what does an average cost for uh, by hour for daycare per kid, I, I don't know how that works, but. Maybe it's four, I don't know, but then you're, you know, it doesn't add up and it's never gonna in areas like this, I don't know how it's ever gonna work. Unless the government starts subsidizing more of it.
Centers tend to be more expensive than in-home daycare, so it's like, I don't know if that's the centers.
But yet they're, they can't find, they, some of them have empty spots, but they can't find staff to fill them. Be, because you gotta have so many people per infant.
Yeah, and centers cost more too.
I feel like you're knocking your head against the wall with the whole thing until there's a good answer.
And that's part of the reason why this, this grant program that came up is also available to in-home daycare. Um, helping them do, you know, physical improvements to the property that supports that business.
One thing, and I should bring up, there was a, a suggestion from EDA to put another ten thousand. Behind this to continue, make it. Uh, perpetual or keep it going and, and I, I wasn't in favor of that, neither was, I mean, the majority would vote it down, just so let's. Put this ten out there, let's see what kind of. Let's figure out how to walk instead of run here first.
Okay, I think, Paul?
Well, AMC, of course, which was. Steve's second or third time down there, so. He led, led us around a little bit, place to place, but it was interesting to speak with Newman. I know. And Erdol both, but, um, Newman turned out to be kind of interesting because he's really focused on his bill. Um, that would take the sales tax from the sale of auto parts and put it a hundred percent towards our highway fund. It would be a true user tax. Now, there's a companion bill in the Senate. Uh, from a Senator Howe, um, he doesn't take a hundred percent, um, to the highway. Instead, he goes seventy-six percent to the highway, twelve to small cities and twelve percent to townships.
House File thirty-eighty-six and Senate File thirty.
Only a couple of numbers apart, I don't remember which one. But, uh, the thing Newman said, he said, there's no support in the House, the first thing they say when you bring it up. Is we can't take money out of the general fund, so later that same day, we had our transfer, or the next morning, I guess, the transportation meeting. Which I am on that committee. And Erin Kriegel, uh, representative from the House was on, uh, virtually. And I asked her point blank about the two bills that were running in the Senate and whether she supported them or not. And as Newman said, the very first words out of her mouth were, we can't take money out of the general fund.
Yeah, of course.
Exactly what Newman had predicted, so, uh, she did not support it, she did not feel there was support for it in the House. However, um, I really got the sense from Newman that, um, there's gonna be a lot of pressure from outside groups. That's gonna be headed towards the House now, didn't you guys get that same impression? Uh, a lot of support could be pushed towards this bill, it would be a great way to permanently fund the highways. Cause we're losing money on the gas tax, we know that, so, uh, that was, that would've been pretty good, so, um. Yesterday on the meeting, I, I know Erin, uh, Andrew was on it. It appears that there is a federal, House Bill, Federal Senate Bill on the gas tax holiday. Which I think we all spoke pretty uniformly, uh, at the Legislative Conference that we were against a state one. We felt that that was a mistake, but there is a federal one currently. Uh, did they say how much support that one had? I don't recall.
Um, all I recall was that the governor had signed a letter of support for it. But the governor hasn't expressed support for a state.
Yeah, so.
So, ca- if you know, how much of the gas cost is taxed between federal and state?
Well, currently we're on the parts.
A lot, isn't it? Yeah.
Part sales tax, we're getting about forty-three percent of the sales tax. Yeah, they claim fifty, but over the years, that's diminished down, um, so, and that's about a hundred and sixty million, isn't that what they said, Steve? Hundred and sixty millions, what we're getting from auto parts tax now. Yeah.
Federal gas tax is eighteen point three cents, uh, per gallon, um, for gasoline, twenty-four point three cents for diesel. Um, Minnesota is twenty-eight point five cents, um, for both gasoline and diesel, so. If you're buying a gallon of gas, it's, what is that, forty-six point eight cents is tax?
That's still, it doesn't, no.
But, I found the conference to be good, interesting, um, met people again that I hadn't met before and, and learned from them. Uh, just in, in visiting with them, uh, then I had a PAC meeting. Um, it's kinda funny you brought up investments, uh, we have a fund balance of two million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, but, um. We have, we pay twenty-five percent plus the benefits of the counselors at several schools, I believe nine schools in the PAC area. Um, and because our funds are beginning to dwindle down, we're not seeing the federal influx of funds into PAC and so forth. Um, one of our discussions was, were we gonna continue to support that twenty-five percent of their salaries? Or were we gonna let the school districts just take it on themselves? Um, and then we took a look at our investments. Um, on a four-year, this is only fifteen thousand dollars, four-year from, uh, a bank in Salt Lake City, Utah, we get three point two percent. On two hundred and forty-eight thousand from that same bank on a five-year, uh. Bond, it's three point three zero percent. So on a lot of our money, we're doing, uh, well, two, three, seven, two point two seven, three point two oh. Uh, one point eight five, um, and then three point three, so we're seeing some and these of course are, are non-risk. Because they're like certificates of deposits, so we're not gonna lose anything on them. We also have a couple here, um, seventy-one thousand dollars where we're getting point one oh. Very poor. Um, so it's ironic that you bring that up and then I had this little sheet here, what we're getting from PAC, you know? And then, um, one last thing I wanted to share with you, um, they used to have, uh, in the high, PAC had fifty-four employees. Um, and we are down now to, um, twenty-three full-time employees at PAC, so we've continued to reduce. The high was in two thousand and three. Um, but they do a exit interview and so I was just kinda curious as I looked through it and. This parti- particular person. Um, liked to give two scores for each one, good and average, but the one that struck out to me, new employee training, good and average. So scored them both that way and then. I think this is true of everybody, at the time you were hired, did you understand what your job would be like? The answer was yes and no, so they answered it both ways, so.
Pretty non-committal answers.
Um, then, we had a CCT meeting last Friday in Wilmer. Uh, we have three point two million dollars, which, or three point six million dollars that has been. Um, granted to CCT for a building in Wilmer. Uh, and they had been looking at the old recycling center and I, that was my first time in there. Um, and this, the county is trying to sell it to them. Uh, cost of renovation is probably gonna gobble up all of that, three point six. And we're still not gonna have a building that is the way it should be, we're still gonna be double parking buses and so forth. So we, um, we're gonna take a look at, um. A new facility, the same as the one in Glencoe, it's a, it's a twenty bus facility and everybody gets to drive straight in, straight out. So that you're not, uh, packing around posts inside of buildings and doing some of this other nonsense and, and we can probably get that constructed. Uh, for just, uh, about, probably about another eight hundred thousand dollars and we'd be brand new, energy efficient. Um, and be in a much better position, so.
Property near where they are though, like this, that's the problem, this building is so, fits into the campus so well.
Well, see, the thing is though, if what they did in Glencoe was the state of Minnesota owns some property in Glencoe. If they would build it to the state's plan, they donated, this thing started by April.
So it doesn't have to be necessarily the current building, but we have to have something.
You have to have a concept of what we're gonna do. So, uh, we're meeting again in a couple of weeks, um, to see what the architects have come up with, um, for that. Then, lastly, um. Um, one of the things I learned at, um. The conference and talking with, um, a David Minky from, uh, Pine County. Uh, they did something with their ARP funds that I sent you all an email, I blind copied you all on an email, so you would see this. Um, and I think it's something that, that I wish we would look at because it is the true spirit of the ARP money. And what they did was, they basically paid the tuition for any. Buddy who was willing to go into work fast type jobs, so, um. Their first go-around was twenty, twenty-one, the fall, they had, um, thirty-seven students that completed courses in nursing. Seventeen in the principles of carpentry, sixteen in the introduction to welding. Ten in basic machining, seventeen in auto technicians, eighteen in emergency medical responder, fourteen into intro. Into cybersecurity and nineteen into business computers for a total of a hundred forty-eight participants in this. Now, when we think about this, this is really an investment in the community because. What do we have here? We have basic manufacturing, we have welding, we have a hospital. Uh, all of these things, uh, auto mechanics, um, principles of carpentry. All of these things are things that would help our community grow. And add to our tax base because now these young people are going to school, kids that may not have gone to school anyway because they couldn't afford it. Are going to school, they're coming back, they're, they're owning homes in the community, they're paying real estate taxes, they're a vital part of the community. I just.
And I, I read that article, it was interesting, they're filling the gap. That they have, um, what I didn't see in there, is there a guarantee that they come back to that county and work for so long, I didn't see that. I think the average, did you, did you read it, Andrew? So I think, you know, they could take a year of vocational or two and. Twelve thousand dollars or something, uh, one gallon was listening to, which is a good start, you don't have any, you know, which helps. They made up their mind obvi- well, you guys probably read it too, you got the article, but. They made up their mind with that money, that they were gonna fill the, help fill the gaps in their county, which. I think it was kinda cool.
I think, I think whenever you see labor as shorted as, as it is right now, y- you create an opportunity for. For a certain sector of society that isn't the college. You know, I mean, I think you're gonna see the old JT, the on-the-job training, the, you know, phrases that we haven't heard in twenty years. Come back to be normal part of, uh, the workforce, you know. We'll, we'll hire, we'll train you, we'll teach you a skill and, and try and retain you, you know, I mean, have a, a package deal where we retain you for X amount of years. And I think that's, the, the, it's supply and demand, I just think it's.
I just look at, uh, trying to hire an IT person for the county and the, and the struggles, we've had that posted twice now with two rounds of interviews and we still don't have a candidate. You know, and here they put through, I can't, I don't, and I've changed screens, but they put through several through the business computing. So, I, I just think it's something, maybe we can take a look at.
I heard you twice, Paul.
It's something where I, I think the true spirit of the ARP money was to, to build back. And, and this would really follow along the true spirit of the ARP money.
Are you gonna be giving us a report on the ARP money anytime, so, I mean, I don't know what we have, what we've spent, what.
Yeah, the, the, the plan has been, because the, the elephant in the room is the facility plan. So the plan has been that after we have a discussion about that, then we're gonna have a follow-up discussion about ARP, so. If, if this sort of a program is something that there's a desire from the board. We can certainly start the process of having a conversation with probably Ridgewater, uh, since we don't have a, a college in the county. Um, to talk about potentially doing something similar to this.
And I, I think it would be interesting also to reach out and find the need, to a master, Bobcat, custom, places like that. Restaurants, there's a need, you know, if anybody wants to go into culinary or things like, I think that would be a.
Here.
Here, county, absolutely, absolutely. I don't know how we do that, but I think it would be.
Lisa Grafantine and.
And maybe Jude, uh. Okay, good.
You know, this may be something we don't have to do alone, we just gotta be able to just to get it started.
Well, they've a cer- certainly been trying to figure it out through the chamber and, and, and Lisa and everyone, where are you gonna get these people? You know, they talk about the great resignation, but there's more to it than that, they're not coming back very fast, so I don't get it, I mean, they're just not. But, so you gotta get the younger people to get them educated into, you know.
You're proposing we pay for tuition?
Maybe, depending on what the need is. I mean, if you read what, that was Pine County, they did some of that, I think there's other things. Um, I serve on boards where they provide education, if they guarantee that they're gonna come in and work for, you know. But you still gotta find the people and establish what the need is.
But you know, you look at what they've got going for the spring of twenty twenty-two, enrollment already, basic machining, they've got ten enrolled to start the spring. Certified nursing assistants, ten, emergency medical responders, sixteen, emergency medical responder initial course, ten. And basic small engines, fourteen. So, there's an interest.
But there's gotta be some guarantee that they're gonna come back and fulfill that in, in the area that paid them though, that's the only concern I would have.
Yeah, otherwise you just subsidize. Government does in general.
Say you're gonna come back to Meeker County and work.
I think the challenge is the teeth on that, so we'll have to lean on our county attorney to find out how to, we can go after those people.
If, if it doesn't happen, yeah.
But I, I think for now, we should just explore this a little bit and say, hey, is this something we even wanna get involved in? You know, so take a, take a moment, read that, that email that I sent. You know, so take a, take a moment, read that, that email that I sent you, there's a couple of links in there to the Star and Tribune, also to a. Guest on uh, TV, um, that was made and just, you know, it's, it's food for thought is what it is. And that is it for me.
Okay, uh, Julie, did you have anything?
I'm ready, okay.
Go ahead.
I know that we, we addressed um, some of the landfill issues earlier. But I have a question, is the landfill still taking debris? Even if the two bulldozers aren't working, I had a, I had a phone call from one of my constituents who's very concerned about that. Um, because he's got a couple of houses to tear down and. He wants to know where he can bring his debris, so how, how are things looking at that?
Right, right now, we are not, but the part of the purpose of this hire was to allow us to uh, reopen. And of course, we have to get the equipment fixed as well, so.
Okay, um.
In, information about the closures on our website and um, we'll update it when it's real.
Okay, um, and I don't know if, if the, if the fairgrounds situation that Steve was thinking about, was that the A-bait? Steve at the fairgrounds?
Uh, no, it wasn't, I, I, something sunshine was on the label. It uh, it was, they pledged a thousand dollars to help out with the childcare.
Okay, um, and then I had uh, the tenth, this past Thursday. Beth, you'll need to uh, report on that, it was the three-county public health meeting.
Sure.
That was on the tenth. Uh, tomorrow morning now, I have the local public health meeting, I'll be able to participate in that.
Local, does that mean you'll be participating in Florida's?
Yes, yes.
Always one in the crowd, Julie.
Oh, of course, and then on the seventeenth, um, there's the Pioneer Land Library meeting. And if I heard correctly, there is no work session this month?
No.
Okay, so that has been.
We're gonna go on the grand road tour.
All right, woo-hoo, all right, um. Then, in regard to what Paul was talking about, um. Of course, I'm, I'm very much in support of everything that helps um, kids with tuition. Ridgewater costs about six thousand a year to, to take a year of schooling. They have carpentry, electrician, nursing, IT, law enforcement, and now they have a new dean at Ridgewater. Um, I think that would be interesting for, for that resource to be tapped into. I'm also curious about um, our county building inspector. If, if we want to offer training through this ARP money and to some of the local colleges. Are, are we looking more into offering potential candidates for positions help? In getting the training that they need so they can fill the positions that we're advertising for? Okay, those were my questions and my, my reports.
All right, thank you, Julie. So, um, I had a CHB meeting, as Julie said, uh, the main discussion was. McLa- uh, Meker has been doing the fiscal part of our CHB for, for the uh. Julie Schrum and she's retiring in, I believe, May. So, could we re, could we, could Meker continue to do it? Um, we are not gonna be able to do it. So, um, Kaiser will be, who is our administrator, will be looking to hire an administrative assistant. We have some money available for that, for about ten hours of it and the rest of it. It's gonna be a full-time person that will do some administrative duties as well as take care of the fiscal. In the meantime, um, the counties, Sibley and McLeod will have to pick up. We'll never have anyone trained by the time Julie is done, so they're gonna have to pick up what they have to pick up. And the intention then, after we establish this, we also have CDS doing some of our accounting work and. If we get a full-time person, we're hoping to bring some of that work from CDS um. Back to this person that works for the CHB, so that was our main discussion, um, we also discussed having a review for our director, which we haven't done and we're gonna work on that. Um, I also attended the same meeting as Danny for the same day for about the. There's a shortage of psychiatric providers right now in the area, so it's causing issues at Woodland. Paul met with us to discuss, reach, he's reaching out to other parties to try to get our clients taken care of, so they, which is important. Um, and I, I guess it, it goes back to. I think we'll have more discussion on it, probably at our next Woodland meeting, so. That was about all I had there, I had a, I had a um, hospital meeting yesterday. We went over in the morning, we exec board meeting, we went over the uh, plans to move clinics into the hospital. Um, it's turning out to be a pretty large project, they presented three uh, three ways to do it. Um, it's gonna be some more meetings and to decide which way to go, they're gonna probably have to be. I think it's bec- becoming more expansive than we talked about, the aim is gonna be to go more toward inpatient because. There'll never be a time when this hospital again needs twenty-six outpatient, inpatient rooms, we just don't have those kinda numbers, everything is going to outpatient. So every hospital's having to adjust to doing that, so there was a lot of talk about that project and there'll be more to come on that. Um, I, we had a, the shelter has a, a Meker County fundraiser, so um. Corey kinda heads that up, but I don't know if it's by choice, but, so we, we had a meeting, we're starting to meet, we'll do our bowling tournament again and probably at breakfast. We had a discussion about that, we haven't set any dates on it. Um, I went to the Darwin Township meeting and I, as you've heard me tell Phil, they're very happy with us, so that always goes well. And I think that's what I had, so I'm done. Anybody else have anything? If not, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Obedeys Schmidt, second by. Sheepaline, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.